You just get to sit down when they can stand up for the court. They have six on the nose.
Do you have a pot job?
Six on the nose, mine is flat.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of February 20th. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands here, the one nation under our head, indivisible, eternal, infinite, and just as far. Thank you.
Will you have the roll call, please, Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly, Mr. Shea.
Who's it?
Mr. Eversman.
You.
Mrs. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski.
Yeah.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
And next, we are pleased to welcome the Coy Student Government for their report. Would you like to come forward, please?
We do have a presentation, so I'm gonna slide out.
Put it down.
Slide over a little bit.
Hello, my name is Carter. I am in fourth grade at Coy Elementary and a member of our student council. Thank you for inviting us to tell you a little bit about what we have been doing to help make Coy a great place to be every day. We have twenty-eight members this year, and it is our first, or it is opportunity to participate in student council. As members of the student council, we must be the楷模 for the younger students in the building. We also, we must also demonstrate leadership qualities, be responsible, and have good grades. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bella, and I'm excited to be here to represent Coy Student Council. We started out our year by choosing our school spirit days. Some of our favorite spirit days have been OSU versus Michigan Day, Pajama Day, and Crazy Hair Day. We also made posters to hang in our building supporting our camp food drive during the holiday season and to encourage students to wear red and support those with congenital heart disease earlier this month. We will also be making posters supporting our third graders during state testing this month. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melanie Loops. This school year, we are count, we were, we are counting to learn about the Ram Way, which is based on Focus Three. The Ram Way means together we are one, passion for growth, own it. Each month, we have focused on a different strategy. Student council members have helped to teach Coy students by acting out situations that demonstrate positive and negative ways to react, interacting with others. The skits have been acted out and, acted out and recorded in places such as the playgrounds, cafeteria, and the classroom. The videos are then shared with the rest of the students at Coy.
We are going to show a quick video of what these guys have created. There is one negative example followed by a positive example of a given situation.
Hey, don't forget to take your homework out. Make sure you're connected.
Thanks, I'll get it out right now.
Hey, your homework isn't done. Oh no, did you forget to do it?
It's not my fault. I had practice at five, and when we got home, I had to eat dinner and shower.
Couldn't you have done it after school? I had practice also, but I forgot it finished way before breakfast.
Yeah, I didn't take that long. The last thing I want to do when I get home is homework. I already know how to do it, so I don't know why my teacher signs it. It's bogus.
It's a show that you know how to do on your. She's just here to help. Here to read the paper. Maybe complaining if I mean your own actions to see it.
I guess you're right. I'll try harder next time, I guess.
So that was the negative. Here's a hope.
Hey, don't forget to take your homework out so we can check it.
Thanks, I'll get it out right now. Hey, your homework isn't done.
No, did you forget to do it?
No, I didn't. I had practice at five, and when we got home, I had to eat dinner and shower.
Couldn't you have done it after school? I had prac, I had practice also, but I forgot it finished way before breakfast.
Yeah, I didn't take that long.
You go far right. I have, I should have planned my day better and not have chosen my videos over my homework. I'm going to let her know that I've been on stage and doing it during my tough time. That's what it's about, you know what to do next time. You're still right.
Hello, my name is Boon Rossi. In November, our school collected non-perishable food items to be used in food baskets, given to people in Oregon and Jerusalem area who are in need. Student council members counted the items brought in each day by each grade level and graphed the results for all students to see. Our school collected a total of 1,548 food items, which meant a goal of 1,500 cans. We love, we love helping out our school community.
My name is Aly Kikas. I am a fourth grader at Coy Elementary and a member of student council. I would like to tell you about an exciting project we have going on at Coy. Student council is hosting a school-wide event where students will bring in bottle caps to help fill the buddy bench for our playground. Our drive begins February 1st and will run until we reach our goal of 200 pounds of plastic caps. Once we reach our goal, the plastic caps will be sent to our recycling center, and they will turn them into a buddy bench. When a student is feeling lonely or doesn't have someone to play with, they can sit on the buddy bench, then other students can walk over and invite them to play. We are very excited to be able to make sure all students are included during recess. Thank you.
Hello, our names are Ava Shaefer and Harper Cass. We are fourth graders at Coy Elementary and members of our student council. As we finish the fourth quarter, we still have two more projects to complete that we are all excited about. In March, we have, we will, we will kick off our school-wide club, and we will be doing a service project that supports the theme of our book. We will be leading the service project while also getting the rest of the school involved. In May, student council members will lead the rest of the fourth grade class to pay up and get outside for it.
This is just one of, one of the many service products each grade level will participate in the rule of our Focus Three topic, Making a Difference. We are so excited to help and give back to our school that has given us so much through these past years. Student council has been such a joy and will surely be useful when we have learned in the years to come. Thank you for letting us and having us and letting me share our experiences. Everybody, thank you.
Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you so much. You did a great job.
So before you all go, let's get in front of the green screen there so we can get a picture here. And advisors, if you could join them, and Mrs. Molnar, if you could join them. And then parents, if you want to come take a picture, feel free. I'd like to get into the green. Try a slight, yeah. Take a minute to get organized.
They may have to kneel down in the front.
All right. Here you go. Realize I get in the way. Get out of your way. We get 'em? Hey, thank you so much for, for doing that and coming out and sharing, you know. It, it's really cool to see what actually happens here because, you know, we're not in the buildings every single day, and certainly board members don't get a chance unless you guys can come here and, and share. So wow, they did great. I mean, they were fantastic. We could hear them all, they said their names, so parents, you should feel proud, so. We do have one more kind of presentation. If you just want to stick around for that, and then you can all scatter around. It'll be really fast. Okay. Oh, yeah, Jerusalem.
Okay, so the next thing is a Jerusalem parents group.
So, Mr. Straka?
Yep.
Come on up to the... So Jerusalem had a really unique project, and so we just felt, Mr. Straka and I, that we should present to the board and kind of a big thank you to Jerusalem and to their parent group for putting together this field turf project that they did previously. So I'm gonna let Mr. Straka say a few words, and then we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. I'd like to introduce Ashley Bay, our JPG president. She is here supporting us as an officer. So about a year ago, a number of my, I guess, JPG officers, myself, had a conversation of what we could do that would have a big impact on our school and help the students. So what we decided, as we bounced some ideas around, was to do a multi-purpose turf field project. Mommy Bay Turf was the company we chose to work with. They did a fantastic job working with us, and we were able to get that done in a short amount of time, within about five to six months from planning to actually opening the turf field. So right now, we have a, I think the actual size is eighty by sixty-ish turf field outback that we use every day for recess, weather permitting. And most days, we can use it because it doesn't flood, and even with some snow, it dries up pretty quick, and kids can be on it. So currently, we have a, a schedule. I'll talk about that, I'll let Mrs. Bay talk a little bit, but we have a schedule for the kids daily. Monday is kind of like open turf time. Tuesday, we may play kickball. Wednesday is like a soccer day. Thursday could be another open day, and then Friday's football. So the idea is to let all the kids participate every day on the turf that want to. I would say, on average, our grade levels are out there, one grade level at a time, and we have approximately 100 students in each grade level. I'd say about half of them are on the turf any given day. The other half, they're on the equipment, or they're playing something else. So I'd say 50% of our students are using that daily. Nice thing is, like I said before, it's multi-purpose. We do not want to market it as a football field, or a soccer field, or a baseball field. It is really multi-purpose. We have a number of students that go out there and do gymnastics on it. They just do relay races, so you name it. So it's being used daily for all of our students. So very fortunate, and I'd like to say thank you so much to our parents group for supporting us. She will read a little, I guess, message that will go to the board, but one thing I want to stress is this was paid for in full by our family members, our Jerusalem families. So the district did not purchase the field. It was something that we put together as a parents group and a, I guess, a building and community, so it was paid for exclusively by them.
So the Jerusalem Parents Group, our JPG, would officially like to donate our outdoor multi-purpose turf field to the Oregon City School District. The field is valued at approximately $140,000 and was fully funded by the generosity of our Jerusalem families.
Thank you. So here's a certificate of thanks that we have. You could represent everybody that was a part of this project. So let's get a picture, you and Jeff. While Mr. Sandwich is getting that picture, I certainly want to thank you. That, that was a unique project that came out of nowhere that I know was driven by you guys and your parent group and, and others in the building, and it's a phenomenal idea. Thank you. Your kids are benefiting, I'm sure, and we can't thank you enough for a project of that size and scope. So thank you, Mr. Straka. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. That's very generous of everyone to do that for us, for the children of the board. And anybody who wants to leave, now's the ideal time before we get into the business part of the meeting.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, on to item seven, participation at board meetings. I have no cards. Do you have any, Mrs. Ruth?
I have no cards.
Thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. And Mrs. Ruth, we are ready for your treasures report.
All right, we will be brief, and there is no need for item C. Apologize, I think. Didn't work that out sooner. These reports shall be in your envelope. You received the cash update as our balancing. Revenues are tracking as we would expect. We're up 1.4% as a total in our revenues for the general fund, mostly Fair School Funding Formula, the incremental increase, and then our interest income, obviously with increased interest rates, that helps a bit too. Expenditures continue to be impacted by last year's extra pay. These will even out over the year. I, I found something interesting today, finally today. I, I've been asking for some time for the effective mileage rates from Lucas County auditors, so we knew what was happening there, so we could do a little bit better forecast. And it was interesting. You can see the Class One and Class Two real estate, they both increased. And public utilities increased quite a bit, as did public utility, personal property. What's interesting is, even though the public, even though Class Two valuation went up, the effective mileage rate also ended up going up about 1%, which is a little different. And it's because we have some, oh, excuse me, exemptions coming off the books, and the state never uses those for the variance. So this will adjust our income a bit, because of course, you always assume it's gonna go down when valuations go up. So it's kind of like new homes. You get a one-year boost, and then it rolls back. But this is what's happening. It was really pretty flat in all fairness, but it's interesting. Audit's been finalized. I do want to know, need to know if anyone would like to have an audit exit conference with the auditors. It's claimed, but that's it. We are working on, hopefully tomorrow, I'll do a test run on having all employee reimbursements be handled ACH, so we won't have any checks on that. I need to run some tests on that, but hopefully in the next week, we'll have that rule in. So that's an update. I do have a contract with an inventory company to do inventory. I reached out to two different companies. The one couldn't come in until next November. It's like, yeah, okay, no, that's, that's ridiculous. And then the other one, I'll show that through emails, but we do have an inventory update hopefully coming. We haven't done that for about 18 years, and I think for insurance purposes and other reasons. It's, it's time to get that done again. So that is all I have, unless there are questions on the reports that were passed out. That's all I have at this time.
Can you have a motion to accept the treasures report?
So moved, which all excludes item C.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to call on the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to...
Mrs. Molnar, I just, can I just, real quick, after that motion, that just thanked the board for their support of everybody on there, including the administrative contracts and all the individuals tonight. That means a lot. I want to thank the administrators here that are in the audience, and thank them for their hard work. We do appreciate and know that we're very blessed to be here in Oregon and to continue to serve. So, so again, just thank you to the board for, for supporting that motion.
Okay, moving on then to new business. The A, item A, Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Resolution. We need a motion to approve the Oregon CT OFCC, CT Construction Program Schematic Design for the agricultural building, which satisfies the OFCC SD Phase Approval Requirements. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item B, Ohio High School Athletic Association. We need a motion to approve participation in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for grades seven through 12 for the 24-25 school year. Upon taking this action, the Oregon Board of Education is agreeing that our athletic program will be conducted in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, interpretations, and divisions of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. This resolution shall remain in effect for the 24-25 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item C, policy. The following policies are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation for adoption will be made in March. All updated policies as a result of the OSBA Policy Book Review, which has taken us six months.
Yeah, that longer. So, well, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in my report.
Okay, so that's just a reminder that it's the first reading.
Yeah, no motion needed tonight.
Yeah. Item T, the Center for Model Schools. A motion to approve a service agreement with the Center for Model Schools for professional development and coaching for the 24-25 school year, now to exceed $150,420, paid for with Title I funds. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item E, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations to the Coy High School Culinary Arts Program to be used during the Mommy Bay, I'm sorry, Mommy Bay Classic Wrestling Tournament. These people, Michael Armstrong, Verid Bagels, Buffalo Wild Wings, Dairy Depot, Foodology, Jack Superec, Kroger, Lee Williams House of Meats, Mexican Lindo, the Oregon Inn, Ralphie's Sports Eatery, the... Sports Eatery, The Zellit Galley, Suk Mediterranean, and Tesco. We also want to thank Advantage Auto, who donated a long block engine with the Clay High School Automotive Program with an estimated value of $2,000. Biofit Engineered Products donated a new library cart to the Eisenhower Intermediate School with a value of $902. May I have a motion to accept these things, please?
So moved with gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Item F, we need a motion to dispose of the following. The Culinary Arts Prep Table, Oregon ID 100320. Sun Diagnostic Equipment, item EOS119 with the Oregon ID number of 1489. An entire balance machine with the Oregon ID number of 1481. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Oh, second. Discussion? Roll call.
I heard Mr. Shae heard that. Okay, excuse me. Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the January 9th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And we are down to the superintendent's report. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you. So as you've been hearing for months, the policy manual is, I guess, completed from our point of view of review. So here's where it comes tricky. It used, in the good old days, used to be a big, you know, physical book that we could sit down and, you know, show everything. Well, it's no longer a printable book. It's all online. So in our Google Drive, there is a probably four or five-page list of each policy and the changes that have occurred. So that's one way, if you guys want to take a look at specifics. A second way would be to let me know and probably come in, and so I can show you how to go into Board Docs. There, I can set you up with an account. See, you can look at, everybody can look at the public view that's on our website right now and read all our policies. But since this book hasn't been, these changes haven't been adopted by the board, it's in a folder, like in an account-driven Board Docs, if that makes sense, that Carol and I have had access to, others, Jane has access to it. So I could certainly set you up with an account, but it's going to take a little bit of, I guess, training to make sure you know how to get to where you need to get to see those policies. So just let me know. We got a whole month till the next board meeting to do that, if there are questions. Carol, did I miss anything on that? Or Jane?
I don't. I don't think so.
I mean, there's a lot there. It's, you know...
It was a five-inch binder when I first came.
Yeah, it was pretty thick. But it was guided by our attorney through OSBA, so we feel real good about where it ended, where we accomplished it. Okay, there's nothing on that. Personnel just keeps moving along. We are adjusting and rolling and moving and hiring and assigning and doing all those things already for next year. I feel real good about where we're going. There's a few question marks yet on some things, but we're working through that, so I feel real good about where we're at policy, personnel-wise, at least in terms of certificate at this point in time. So that's good. Just some updates from capital improvement. Mr. Sandwich is working on the summer list, so that becomes a big project, just kind of putting them in priority or, you know, top, middle, and low-level types of ideas. But he's going to be meeting with the principals and maintenance departments and those types of things to put that together, so I appreciate that. And also then looking at all those needs that come up, and how do they match with our, kind of our five-year plan that we put together and shared with the board. LED lighting projects continue. Both gyms at Clay are completely finished, which is great now, and the goal is to finish Clay, the entirety of Clay with LED lighting here by next school year. Our greenhouse and animal housing facility project will go out to bid most likely in mid-April. That's the timeline and schedule. You just, tonight, approved one of the hurdles we needed to go through to get to that point, which was the OFCC resolution that you approved, so thank you for that. And then just, you know, looking forward, some of the big summer projects are a big section of Asphalt at Starr. I think we did part of that last year and finishing that up this year. Electrical fix at Eisenhower and used up some of the last of our ESER funds for AC at Facet and Eisenhower. So that's kind of capital. So I don't know, Mr. Savick, if you would, if you're comfortable sharing academics?
Believe it or not, we are getting close to the end of the third quarter, just a few weeks away from that. The third quarter ends on March the 12th. Some dates of importance for family members and their kiddos. February 27th is the Junior ACT. On March 14th, the incoming kindergarten parents meeting at 6 o'clock, that'll be held via Zoom as it has been in recent years. March 15th is K-12 Professional Learning Day. And then the third quarter grades are final on March 20th. And a reminder that spring break will be held March 29th through April the 8th. And of course, the April 8th date is the addition of the Eclipse adjustment that's been made to the schedule. Also did some discussion regarding the Center for Model Schools. This is the second year for the program, and obviously we are a four-star district, and we want to do everything we can to make sure our children are getting the best educational opportunities that can be provided to them, and the Center for Model Schools is helping with that. The rigorous curriculum design component for Facet, it's only a Facet right now. Administrative teacher coaching was an opt-in for the very first year this year, and a consultant from ICLE came in and did some classroom observations at Facet and Clay. And this is something as we continue to strive for, not only doing, continuing to do well in academics, but doing even better in academics, that we want to make sure that our teachers have all the tools at their disposal. I say the CLE component will allow us to do just that.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you to Mrs. Coy in the audience and all her hard work and coordinating, and to her administrators that took part in that. It's been quite an experience. She's feeling really, really good about it, hence the $150,000 commitment to continue it next year that the board just approved, so thank you for that. It's all on the title funds, federal title funds, which are budgeted and ready to go, so we feel real good about that. And just the last thing I have, just to give you a heads up, there's been a calendar committee. Mrs. Mulnar, myself, Mr. Pfeifer, Mrs. Coy have been meeting and just kind of talking about it. We decided a while ago that we'll put together a parent survey, just to get another piece of data for the final decision on the upcoming calendar. So look for that here within the next week or two, the latest. It's just about in its final form, but we'll have the committee look at it one last time. Just five or six basic questions. It'll be under a minute for people to give their opinions on things like spring break and start of the year, end of the year, those types of questions that come up every calendar season. So, but it's good to get another gauge on maybe what our families are thinking, because it does change over time. So I'll be looking for that, and that's my report, unless there's questions on anything.
And how, I've had some questions on that calendar. So Jim, is graduation still basically the same flow through the first weekend after the holiday?
We are contracting for, we go year-by-year contracts. So this year is June 2nd, I believe, so we signed one-year contracts.
Okay, so we don't have a date for the school year in question, that following school year?
Not as of yet.
Okay.
They have to listen for that traditional first Sunday after the break, or after Memorial Day, yes.
Are we talking, Mr., are we talking the 24-25, the end of next school year?
That graduation, yeah. Just a good, I've had some people reach out, they got kids.
So we'll know, check, Mr. Jersey, we do have June 1st, which is that date in the calendar as it, but you're saying as it been confirmed, it's, we have an adopted calendar for next year, we're talking about the 25-26. Okay, just to make sure we're on the same page. Yeah, we don't have anything for that particular year. We have June 1st for next year's.
But fingers, we have followed traditional plan until that first year.
Yeah, okay. So, good question. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any old business? Okay. I have the good news report.
I like that.
March 21st, Northwest OSBA Spring Conference at Penna. We do have a nomination for a leadership award for Mrs. Victor Ben, if you want to go make reservations with Pam Shae. At Clay High School, we have 12 BPA students advancing to state competition, 14 HOSA are going to state, and nine Skills USA. The Clay Band was the VCSN Chick-fil-A Band of the Week. The hockey team has advanced to semifinals for the first time since 2016, and they will be playing St. Francis, I believe.
That's right.
Okay. From the Perrysburg game at basketball, our student section won the Unison Student of the Week Award. And in wrestling, we had nine placers in the NLL Wrestling Tournament. Josh Medina was, had a third, Gabe McNally a second, and Garrison Wisner was Co-Wrestler of the Year, and he's only a sophomore. So that's really amazing, I think. The Mini Cheer Clinic had about 130 participants. Eisenhower has a new therapy dog named Gibson, beautiful white curly-haired dog.
A duo of some kind, I think.
Facet also has a blood drive on the 22nd. Facet Wrestling. At a district tournament, they had four state qualifiers, three district placers, and one of those was just a sixth grader, not...
Not even junior high.
Not even junior high. And Angelo Cardonas was the district champion. And my last piece of good news is Frost Fest this year, thanks to Amy Hansen, raised $55,564, which is a new record. But that's my good news report. Anybody else? Anything?
I'll just echo, the winter season's been very successful. Give Mr. Kiss a shout-out, and, you know, we've had some new coaches, and it's been been a good, solid season. Hard to believe it's over already, and now we're talking about track, which is going to be exciting, because we host the NLL and the tournament for the first time. So he's going to have about, what, two and a half, three weeks of back-to-back-to-back-to-back? Track needs out at our track, which is awesome. First time, I think, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
For us. So that's kind of a new thing, and baseball's gearing up, softball and all, everything. So it's an exciting time.
You know, I didn't say anything about swimming. Our swimming people are not going to state, but they set a lot of new personal records, and I think we could be just as proud of that as other things that are going to state and so forth. So I'm proud of them, too. They did a good job. Anything else, anyone?
Carol? I have a couple things. Just first of all, on your, you mentioned the softball program. They are kicking off their brick drive with the cooperative effort of the baseball and the softball teams. They now have locker room facilities located at the City of Oregon Recreation Complex, and to help build out that interior space, and also for their bullpens that they want to put up for the softball. They're doing a fundraising drive where you can purchase a brick and have it engraved with your family name, or anyone that may have played, or really any appropriate message you could have put on there. So that's been kicked off. And then I want to just spend just a minute to share with you what I've been able to learn by my work outside of this board, something I've been doing for a lot of years, is the Memorial Day Observance that we hold annually at the Memorial Stadium and in the garden area where the memorials are. And we've heard the name tonight of Coy. We saw the students from Coy School, we've had the reference to Jennifer Coy, and you've mentioned Coy up here. And that is the name that most everyone in here by now has either seen through social media or the news accounts, that in the class of 1941, a student graduated by the name of Jack Coy. And this is of the same Coy family that were leaders in the Oregon Township. The family residence was there on the, what, the 3,300 block of Navara Avenue, you know, the Coy cider mill, the, you know. So Jack Coy was killed on February 24th of 1944 in a bombing mission. He was a tail gunner on a B-24 Liberator bomber, took off in the countryside of England, and they were bombing the Gotha Messerschmitt plant. This was, that produced the German fighters that downed so many of our air crews. And normally that plane would have had a 10-man crew, it had a 9-man crew that day, and they, over the target, they had 25 B-24 bombers. They sent other fighter, other bombers to other targets, and that group ran into what they said was Panama to Hell, with the flak, the enemy fire coming up from the ground, and the fighters that they put up to defend that plant, of the 25 planes that hit the target, and they had no fighter support. They arrived 11 minutes at the rendezvous spot before the fighters would get there, and rather, you know, fuel and all that stuff was carefully figured out, they proceeded onto the target. And so they went in without the support of any fighters, and they, of the 25 bombers, 13 of them were lost, including the bomber that Jack Coy was the tail gunner on. That bomber exploded from the, I think, two men parachuted out, two guys got out. One vividly recalls the plane hitting the ground, and it exploded. But now the Defense Department, through all of their great work, the search for the missing serviceman, they have identified his remains, the family, two members, all of them, lots of Clay graduates. From the, Jack had two sisters, Harriet and Jeanette, and they each had three children, and they all went to school here, and were members of the community, still are members of the community. And so now the story is broke that they have identified his remains, they've let the family know that. We did invite the memorial group, but we invited them to be a part if Jack had perhaps come home in May, or sometime before Memorial Day, to join us. But Jack is not as, his great, no, his great nephew told me, I believe it's nephew or great nephew, in South Carolina, who's the lead, he said that they're going to have his remains brought home in September. They will go to Willow Cemetery, there will be a full military escort, the community will be invited. But the family is planning on, some family members are planning on joining us this Memorial Day out back. And it's an incredible thing, because, you know, that's 70 years removed, and yet we're now going to, the news that one of those names on that World War II memorial is coming home. And that's significant, because none of us were alive when that memorial was dedicated, and those people were lost. I don't believe, anyways, here's that, maybe, anyways. But it's just a great moment for the community, it's a great moment for this school, and the generations that attended this school district before us, some of us here that are sitting here that are graduates. So it bodes well, it'll be a great moment for the district, and I just wanted to let you know that that's going to be an important thing, and hope you all stay tuned and try to, try to attend something if you can.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that story, because...
Oh, and that unit, and his unit, that bombing mission, they awarded the Presidential Unit Citation, which is for gallantry in a very important mission. And that is a high-level decoration.
Yeah, very, very, very unique and special story that we're able to be a part of here at Clay and certainly Oregon, and thank you, Jerry, for all that background on that. We appreciate it very much, and we'll do what we can to support it and find information and continue so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, regular board meeting. I have as... March 19?
Yeah, that's what I have. I didn't know what the special one would be.
And then I don't have... Okay, so March 6th, 5 o'clock. And is there anything else for the good of the board? Anybody need to make a change?
Just don't run off, we want to do a picture.
Don't run away, we need a picture.
Real quick.
May I have a motion to adjourn, please? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
I heard Mr. Eversman, I hope that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yeah.